Okay, we're going to call the work session for the Board of Mayor and Alderman to order for August 28, 2018. We'll start out with an opportunity for citizen comments. I only have one citizen comment for an item that is not on the agenda. Mr. Jones, I'll give you three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Alderman Council, my name's Doug Jones. I'm a partner in the law firm of Sherman, Leary, and Bennett in Nashville, Tennessee. I've been practicing law forty-two years. I represent the United Daughters of the Confederacy. I've served on the Tennessee Civil War Preservation Trust Board for nine years, the Battle of Nashville Preservation Society president. I worked at the time at the Battle of Nashville with the USCT 13th colored troops. We raised the money to put the statute out at National Cemetery. I just got through representing Friends of Fort Negley against the city of Nashville, where our former mayor wanted to give away half of Fort Negley, believe it or not, to developers. We won that case. And so I'm here today, very briefly, to speak for the UDC in regard to this issue you're considering. The Franklin Chapter of the UDC is an organization which has been in Franklin for 120 years. It's a group of ladies whose objectives are historical, educational, benevolent, memorial, and patriotic, and they've attempted through the years to remember and tell the history. And Franklin is remembered, both sides well, during the war between the states, and we should leave that alone, the statute out here. But we also should tell more of the story. When I first heard about this, I said, "This is a good thing. I've known Eric Jacobson since he showed up in Franklin. I represented the Carter House. I've been around here a long time." My people are from Columbia, Murray County. They were born in a cup-- one of them was born in a covered wagon going through Franklin. So I go way back in Franklin. Y'all might say, "Who's Jones? He's showing up down here representing the UDC. He didn't know anything about Franklin. I've been fooling with Franklin a long time, and y'all do well, and I care about Franklin." Now, having said that, the members of the Franklin Chapter of the UDC have a vision to present the whole story. We think it should be located out at the Carter House, where tourists and townspeople can alike can visit. We're suggesting a large area, and we want to meet with Mr. Stuckey and the pastors and explore this more, where there can be a bigger area than just the ground out here in front. And we do want to tell all the stories. I've had lawsuits on historic preservation all around the South. I've spoken all around the South. Slavery's terrible. It was terrible then, it's terrible now. It's 2018. It needs to be told in Franklin, everything. And so we support that. We think it's a good idea to tell about it. And we've learned just this week about more black Confederate soldiers that fought at Franklin. I mean, it's amazing Eric can tell you, there's more scholarship coming out over and over that everybody thinks it's over and a done deal. It's not. So we support this, and we want to tell it all, not just this little story that. We want to tell about the horrors of it, too. And we want to tell inspiring stories, and we think this should be done, and we hope y'all consider that. Now, we support a wide interpretive view of Franklin Civil War history that honors the memory and contributions made by African-Americans to the Franklin community. I've been on that side of the fence. I support it personally, and we stand ready to work with y'all and with the pastors and with Mr. Stuckey and Eric on that. However, they sent me down here, okay? They hired me, understand? There's one fundamental fact we hadn't talked about, that hadn't been considered as a part of this discussion. And I respectfully look each of you in the eye and tell you that the monument and the land right out here in the square is owned by the United Daughters of the Confederacy. And if you want to litigate that, we can do that. I don't think it's in the best interest of anybody to do that. I think we can come together and maybe show something to the whole entire nation. This is a real opportunity. But I also want to look you in the eye and tell you, we take the position, we own it. We own that ground, not just the statute.
Yes, sir. If you'll go ahead and wind up, your three minutes is well over.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Finally, I want to say to you, we've been out here, we've been working in Franklin, we've been good neighbors to Franklin for 120 years. There was some talk in one of your meetings that all the historical groups had been spoken to about this. Nobody ever came and spoke to us about it. So finally, it's a fundamental right of property rights in this country that we be respected, that we be brought into this, and we look forward to working with you. And that's all I have, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next is a review of the six-month building activity. Lynn, good to see you.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Actually, I'm going to review the fiscal year 2018, because when I started looking at it, it is clear that it was a very significant year as far as development was. First of all, you can see on the report where we had 6,835 permits issued. That's actually less permits than in 2017, fiscal year 2017, but you'll see what's exciting about that in a minute. As far as new dwelling units go, we had, in fiscal year 2017, we had 635 single-family homes. Fiscal year 2018, we had 495 homes. Fiscal year 2017, we had 297 multifamily homes. Fiscal year 2018, we had 1,247 multifamily homes. You'll see some of these in process, under construction right now, including the Standard, Iron Horse, Harpeth Square, Avenida, and North Side at McEwen. Those are the significant properties that make up that over 1,200 number. The estimated value of building permits, or how we like to consider it, the investment in our community, was just under $1 billion for fiscal year 2018. That's the highest that I have seen in any of my reporting. It's $300 million over fiscal year 2017. Now, year-to-date, for the calendar year 2018, we're at $365 million. So a significant amount of this development and investment occurred in the first half of the fiscal year 2018, or the last two quarters of 2017. Just a couple of significant items. One of our highest quarters ever was the October to December 2017 quarter with $276 million worth of investment. And a couple of the projects for 2018 that have added to these numbers, these are over $10 million, would be the hotels over off of Mallory Lane, Staybridge Suites and the Hyatt House. We also have a medical office building going up that was, came online in 2018, McEwen Town Center apartments, and the North Side at McEwen Office Building. That's in addition to all of the activity at the end of last year that made up this fiscal year. Does anybody have any questions or anything I can clarify?
The $1 billion is the last 12 months?
It's the last fiscal year, so starting July 1, 2017.
The conflict is going up across from the Walmart.
Yes.
That would be in this year?
It's in the fiscal year, yes.
This year, so that's not counted in those numbers?
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Good report.
It's always interesting to hear this.
And I have a hard time narrowing it down with so much activity to let you know what's all going on.
You did a good job. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is a liquor license renewal for Franklin Wine and Spirits. Everybody good with that one? We'll move on to item three, which is a public meeting code of conduct draft.
I want to bring something before you that staff has developed, and we want your feedback on. We have many public meetings, interactions in this room, Planning Commission, neighborhood meetings, et cetera, and virtually all of those go very well, but occasionally we can have very heated discussions. And we wanted to, outside of a specific issue or a specific meeting, take time to provide some guidelines that might be helpful in managing a public meeting, especially to the folks who chair a meeting, in terms of the guidance and what we expect, all with the goal of facilitating a productive meeting. People's views can all be heard, respected, and managed in a constructive way. So that's the spirit in which this has been drafted. You see, we have a nice little polite acronym that goes through here that describes our policy, talks about the rules we want to observe, how we want to facilitate listening to all the points of views that come forward, that we're intentional about, the purpose of these meetings, and then that we tolerate the different views that come forward that help us have constructive discussion. And again, at the end of the day, this is about educating ourselves around the issues and making informed decisions for our community. So that really is here. There are some very specific rules and a couple components, especially item number two, that for the most part are elements that we observe today, but thought it would be helpful to delineate those upfront. Could be something that we even have when people fill out comment cards, they can see those, that guidance, and we can provide those in this room or in different public settings to help guide those meetings and especially give folks who are chairing a meeting guidance in what, and how they manage that meeting and that interaction. So that's the intent with which we bring it forward. Michael did a lot of work in writing this. We had a broader staff team that works in a lot of public meetings to help us pull some different concepts together. We looked at similar efforts that have been done by communities across the country to help instruct this. So these are not all original ideas, and like I said, a lot of these you'll recognize as being largely what we do today anyway, but we wanted to put it down in writing so it can be something that you have and that we can share with the public. We're preparing to do some training with you and other commissions in September, and this might be instructive to have with that group as well. So I'll leave it there, and we can answer any questions or discussion, and Michael or Sean, if you have anything you want to add to it, welcome your comments, too.
Alderman, Edie?
Yeah, I think this is great. I think specifically, I think it was the Maze Creek meeting down the hall that really almost kind of got out of hand. I'm glad to see some of this, because I know there's one thing we tried to do, or maybe you submitted your questions in advance, I think some people were upset with that, but then there were just a lot of yelling out of the audience, and with the lack of a gavel, it was kind of hard to control that meeting. So I really think this is necessary.
And if I'm not mistaken, was that our meeting or the developers' meeting?
Well, that was a neighborhood meeting, so it is something that's part of our development process. We don't necessarily chair those meetings, but having this structure in place is something that could help you with that.
Alderman, Lynn?
When I first saw this, I was like, "Oh, what did I do wrong?" Because you immediately start, you do, you start kind of going--
Don't internalize it.
Oh, I said stupid last meeting, it was my fault, but I do think this is great. I know, it's impractical, I've been practicing. I do think it's great. I do think that we bear the burden of educating not only ourselves, but the people that attend our meetings. And I see you all over this, especially the last quote. I'm like, "Who did this?" And now I see that. So I don't know how you replicate this in a friendly manner so that people can see it or we can refer to it, because I think it's hard to hold people accountable who we do, I don't want to say business, but in a lot of times that's what it is, to the same standards we're trying to hold ourselves to. And to that point, because I'm a little jealous, at the Planning Commission, they have this really fancy timer, and we don't use that timer. And I don't know if it was their idea, but I think if we could be consistent across the board, I think it would help you for people to have that visual, and I think it would, you know, just so that we have consistent things in place, and maybe we have a gavel for a Planning Commission meeting or things like that. So people just start to come to expect that at every public meeting that we are responsible for the standard set and met.
We call that the shot clock, and we can definitely--
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think it would be great.
Alderman Berger? Then Alderman Peterson?
Thank you for doing this. We really need this, and for us and for the public. But one of the things in here, when it says no display of plac, place cards and signs and all that, that just reminds me to think, how are we going to communicate this to the public when they come in for the various meetings? Are we going to display out here? And also, wouldn't hurt to have something on this column and these papers at the, even though we have it displayed, we may display it out there, which I'm thinking you're going to do, but also to have these printed out for every meeting and put some copies there with a sign on that pole that says, "If you plan to speak, please pick up a code of conduct" and instruct them to pick it up, because they might miss it if it's posted out front.
Yeah, we thought about doing some kind of poster, that's a great idea. Also, put something on our website that talks about public meetings and what they are and how they, how we conduct them. So just every avenue we can to share whatever ultimate form this takes to make sure people know as much as possible before they come in the room that there are guidelines that we have that are designed so that they can be heard and everyone can be heard effectively.
And people will miss it if it's posted, even, which we need to post it. But I would suggest, especially when we have community meetings, that we have it posted down there, and that we have this actually printed out with a sign going into the room down there at the training room and here on this column, says, "If you plan to speak, please pick up a code of conduct sheet, be familiar with it," something like that, because we really do need to instruct people, because it's easy to miss something posted out on the hallway.
One of the reasons why you have the polite spelled out here is that we were intending to then take policy, observe, listen, intention, tolerate, and educate, and either put those on the back of the comment cards as they're submitted, or again, you can shrink it down so you can simplify it and have those available to hand out as well. So that would help facilitate an even simpler way of boiling down some of the particulars.
But notice that this says, "For all public meetings." So it doesn't, and if someone wants to have placards, signs, or whatever, and they bring them to the meetings, they're still welcome to have them in the hallway. They just can't bring them in here, because, you know, we want to make sure that we can hear you talking.
Yeah, and plus, you know, sometimes we're really crowded in here, and it's difficult to bring--
But we've had people set up booths out in the hallway.
Right, in the hallway, I think is very appropriate. The other thing is, I didn't see in here, and I don't know if you need to address it, but we did have an experience with this a couple times, that people approached the dais during a meeting. And I'm thinking, maybe you might want to put that in there.
That's a good point, too.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I've got Alderman Peterson, Alderman Bransford, and then Alderman McLendon.
First of all, I want to say, I don't exactly have the same response that the other people do. In fact, about 10 years ago, whenever many of us were new members, something like this was discussed, and I remember not only thinking, but saying, "This kind of implies that Franklin citizens don't know how to behave." And so it's, but honestly, as I read this, it sounded like the kindergarten teacher telling the, her students how to behave, or I mean, or maybe a mother scolding a child. Honestly, and let me tell you, it's not just recent times, and by the way, the Planning Commission does have a gavel, because I have chaired that sometimes, and I can remember very well using that gavel and saying, you know, "Please wait your turn to speak." And I was talking to the audience there, you know. But it does bother me somewhat that it truly, and I have to say, for almost all of the meetings that we have, everyone does behave. They may not say what you want to hear said, and sometimes, you know, we say to each other things that, that maybe other people don't want to hear. But as I say, it seems, I mean, this just seems like it's over the top there, and I really wish you would think about, and I don't know how many cities have a code like this, but still--
We found a lot of them.
But still--
If you do a web search, you'll find lots of them.
But let me tell you, some of them are already things that, I mean, anytime the chair can ask to have somebody removed, you know--
We're hoping that this will give them a little bit more backing.
You may know that, but not everybody.
Right. Some of our chairs need a little bit more strength before they act, and so we were hoping that this would facilitate and help that, because we've found situations where if, if the chair had, had something like this in, in writing, they would have felt a little bit more confident to gavel down and remove people from the room.
But, but again, though, it sounds kind of condescending to me.
Well, we're open to suggestions--
I mean, really, that's just what I'm saying.
If you want to set a different way, there's no pride of authorship. We need to, you know, we want to just make sure we get the message out right.
Alderman Bransford?
Well, I think this is a great way, because I see it being proactive in some ways. You're right, we don't, everybody that come in here does not disrespect the podium. So I think it's very important for people to know, as we discuss this and walk through this, this is not taking away anyone's freedom to speak. They have that freedom to speak. It is allowing you to speak your mind and then allow the other person to speak their mind, which you may agree with or may not. So you are respecting the differences of opinions and allowing that to happen without discourse, anger, police involved, et cetera. Because, you know, you can, it's easy to look around our world today and see where there are public gatherings, and they can very well get out of hand. So I think it's a good proactive way to approach this.
Alderman McLendon, and then I'll recognize Alderman Barnhill.
Well, I'm going to support this, but I think it's a crying shame we're at this Yeah, it's, it's an unfortunate acknowledgement that this is where we are, that at a democratically-elected governing body, we have to tell people how to behave. Alas, we do. So I'll support it. I just wish that we could push this lesson down to, to the sandbox. And what I mean by that is there are certain things that I call sandbox rules, and those are rules that you ought to learn in the sandbox, and they're good for life. Don't take people's stuff. Share, be nice, don't hit girls, and all this. So I'll support it, but I think it's a sad acknowledgement of the state of affairs in 2018, that we have to write it down and say it out loud and print it and hand it to people when they walk in the door.
Alderman Barnhill?
I'll support it also, simply because it, that's, that's the nature that we're in now. I do think this, I think the meetings themselves, I think it's the mayor's responsibility, or whoever the chairman of the committee is, or whoever's in charge of the meeting. If these rules help enforce that and give that person some confidence in controlling the meeting, I think it's, I think that is, I think that's the key to all of this. I mean, what Dana said is true. I mean, it's a shame that we have to have this, but we have Robert's Rules of Order, we have the order, the rules that are applying to this meeting. You know, I don't see this particular meeting, workshop, board meeting, or some of the others, I don't see those meetings as having the necessity for this rule. But I do see where we're at, some of the public meetings and some of the workshop meetings and some of the others, where there's just somebody talking in the back and somebody talking up front, and somebody else yelling out something or other, and no identification, you don't know who's speaking. So I, yeah, I think it's, I think this is a good idea. But I still think, I still think if this helps the mayor, the chairman of the committees or whatever, and allows them to have the full-thought-in-front of them to control the meeting, then this is, this is a good situation.
I want to say one other thing, and Clyde, you know this, too. You know, we can remember meetings that lasted, what, four hours long and everything, you know?
We can remember meetings that started on Tuesday night and then--
Exactly, exactly. But I'm saying that--
Easily.
I did not think they got out of hand. I mean, really, as I said--
I think there was infighting with the aldermen back then, at times.
Well, there may have been. But I want to say, Mr. Mayor--
You were too young to remember that.
I think that what you do is very effective, very effective.
Absolutely.
And, and I don't know why we can't do that all the way down the line.
I do have a quick comment, and then I'll recognize Alderman Berger, but when we had the incident where there was some activity up here at the board level one night, I came back the next meeting, and I'd worked with Shawna, and I had a statement about protocol and how we should act, and I remember all of you looked at me and said, "What are you doing?" But I think this is a good guide for, for our audience. I would ask that, there may be certain meetings that whoever's chairing that meeting thinks that there may be increased tension or something, that there may be, be a short paragraph that you might be able to read and then reference this, would be my comment. Alderman Berger?
So unfortunately, today, we lack a lot of civility in our communities throughout the world, so, you know, it's not just Franklin, and unfortunately, you know, with Dana, it's unfortunate we have to do this, but we need it and we should put it forth, because people need to know what's allowable as well. They need rules, and just like kids in school, you set the rules, you set the expectations and what you expect, and if we need to do that, we need to do that. At least they have a clear, I don't want someone to say, "Well, I didn't know," or "No one told me," and I don't like that. I like to be upfront with people and make sure that they know that. The other thing is, my question, of course, you know, it's really important that people have the freedom to attack the issue, but not the people, and, and the language that sometimes can be used is important to address that. But my question is, when a developer is required, required by the city to have the meeting, that's the developers' meeting, but the planning commission is there with them, who puts a stop when somebody's attacking the person required to give the meeting? And because that happened, and it was very, very plainly witnessed by everyone, and that frustrates me to no end, to sit there, I just want to stand up and say, "Stop, timeout, we don't do those things. You don't attack the person, you don't say, 'You've got enough money, don't develop anymore, just go retire.'" I mean, whatever they say is not appropriate, so how do we handle that? How will we handle that?
That's a good question, and I think it's something that we probably, as a group, need to talk about and figure out who's going to control the meeting, who's going to run the meeting. I mean, it is the developers' meeting, they, they do need to run that, but--
Sure, but they're the one being attacked.
There's not a formal chair in those, so that's something we need to think a little bit about how we--
There's a gap there that needs to be--
It's a good point. It is a gap.
That, that probably is the number one thing that bothers me, because we know what I'm referring to, and I just don't want to see that happen again. Yeah. It's real important.
Okay, we're going to move on to--
Could I say one last thing? When it was talking about educating--
What if I said no?
Okay.
That was very civil.
But asserting your 30th chair.
That's right.
Throw her out, Mayor.
I don't know why we have this.
I just want to say, I'm talking about educating, everything, I can very well remember being in an early meeting where I was an alderman, and someone said to me, "Well, if you understood this, you'd be for it." So, and that was that alderman's opinion, you know? But I'm just saying, don't think that if what you're educating is maybe just your idea. It's not that educate, different people think education is different things.
To be fair, in drafting this, I tried, to be honest, to, to find things that would be somewhat inspirational, that would hopefully, in, in all who participate in our democracy here in Franklin, that they would be able to follow and able to do in order to elevate the conversation, and that would fit with the moniker of polite. And that would fit with the moniker of polite. So, I chose educate.
The, the problem is, the people that need these rules will be the last ones to adhere to them. But that said.
Often the case in society.
The chair should have the authority to gavel people down and throw them out.
That's right.
Okay. Now we'll move forward. May I move forward?
Thank you. Use the gavel.
Now, we're going to go to the, uh, discussion regarding water and sanitary sewer cost of service study.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, uh, we're coming forward with an update to our cost of service perspective. For the better part of, I guess about nine years, we have put in place, uh, an approach where we take a longer term, a five-year outlook towards our water and sewer utilities and chart out where we think we need to be on rates. And over the last several years have asked you then to adopt rates in a two-year window, but that fit a five-year, uh, overall plan. Uh, one of the things we decided to do and talked to you about during the budget process was to replace the fifth year of the current five-year plan with year one of a new five-year plan. And that would coincide with us receiving, uh, we're anticipating and now have, uh, received and awarded the bid for the wastewater treatment plant project. So, uh, with the, that part now known and, uh, better sense of where that financing might be, related to that, we wanted to build a new plan to show you where we would be going forward and give you a five-year outlook. So, uh, Jim Marshall is with us, uh, and, uh, they, they've worked with us over all of those times to help us do these five-year plans, have updated it. Uh, Michelle's here as well to walk through that. And so, we'd like to take some time tonight to walk through an updated five-year plan for water and sewer with a couple of options we've developed. Obviously, there are more options that we can develop if you'd like. But, uh, what our recommendation would be about a couple of options to look at for both water and sewer and get your guidance on how we move forward. Uh, we would want to adopt, uh, new rates that could be effective by January one would be our goal. Uh, because we, we're due to set rates for the next two-year window, uh, to follow our, our, our practice over the last several years. So, I'll let Michelle or Jim, whoever wants to go first, uh, jump in there if we can get the power.
I'll, I'll stall.
Okay.
No, we.
We've got it in front of us.
Oh, do you? Okay. Um, I will put it in front of me. Um, we have good news. Uh, from where we were when we first really looked at this in a five-year increment back in 2013 or based off of 2013 information, um, things look better. I mean, what we're asking you to do or to consider, you know, five years ago, we're not, we're not having, it's not that big of an ask, I'll put it that way. Um, but if you look on slide two, there in front of you, water system recovered at 91% for fiscal year 2017. So, for every dollar that the water system needed, 91 cents was collected. And then you can see going left to right, residential inside-city limits, residential outside-city limits, commercial in and out, and then irrigation. So, you can see a, a, a current rate revenue, as if current rates were in place, of 11.2 million, didn't quite meet the, the, the goal there. And there were some, some, I would say, extenuating circumstances back in, in fiscal year 2017, which is the core of this analysis. Moving to page three, um, you can see here on the, uh, we just, all right.
Hopefully, it'll eventually get up on the screen, we apologize.
Um, 2017, the, the, uh, the blue bar there on the far left is the rate requirement reflective of the 2010, 2017 study. And then the rate revenue that came in is, is the red bar. In the years past, we've recommended three and a half percent rate increases. Outside of what that specific rate action was, that annual target was a three and a half percent additional revenue. This year, and really for the next two years and, and, and going forward, we, we anticipate that, that it could be for the next five years, an increase of just under 3% at 2.9% a year. So, that's come down a good bit from that three and a half that we've, we've recommended in, in years past. Moving to, to page four, you know, we've established that target, that 2.9%. Well, next up that we've always discussed is how, what is the fairest, most equitable way to, to fill in that bucket, to meet that gap? And we have two options for you guys to consider tonight. And as Eric said, we can, we can go back to the drawing board and, and perhaps bring a, a third to the table or even a fourth eventually. But, but I really, outside looking in, and I know it's, it's been several years since that customer charge, the fixed component of your rate design has been, has been touched. Or option A for both water and then ultimately sewer that we'll get to in a moment is to focus on that customer charge increase. Option A would be to, to go up a dollar fifty in year one and again a dollar and fifty in year two. That'd be a three-dollar increase to that, to the customer charge for all ratepayers. Based off billing statistics in 2017, that would bring in about $654,000, which is representative of that 2.9% annual rate increase. On slide, all right, good. Slide, where do I point to get it?
I think they may have.
Perfect.
I think they're going to have to do it for you, right?
Okay. Are we going?
It's a PDF.
All right. Um, page five, the result of the study in the blue line on a, it costs to serve on a per-unit basis is that blue curve. That represents resulting in this, from the study, a $15.80 cost to serve a residential inside-the-city-limit customer before they buy any water from the city. And then $5.19 for every thousand gallons purchased. So, in essence, a, a 1,000-gallon customer costs you $21. Okay? That 15.80 plus the 5.19. Your current customer charge is $11.86 and includes 1,000 gallons of water. So, uh, in round numbers, you're collecting $12, but relative to your rate, you're giving back five of that. So, your net effective customer charge is, is right at $7, which is half of, of where it could be relative to the results of the study.
Say that one more time, please.
Okay. Right now, your, your current residential inside rate is $11, we'll just say $12, just so I can do the math in my head, is $12. The first tier of your volumetric rate is at $4.96 or $5, where you're including 1,000 gallons of water in that $12. So, you're giving back $5, right, relative to your current rate. So, that's a net effective customer charge of $7. The 12 minus that five that you're returning in the form of the 1,000 gallons, which is, which is a little bit less than, than half of, of where it could be. Your current rate is in that, the, the bottom, the red line, the red curve, the, the bottom curve there. And from a visual perspective, if you're below the blue line, that red line, you're not recovering the money relative to that usage level for this rate class. And that's why it was, outside looking in, our first recommendation would be to try and recover all of that through the fixed component.
There was a reason that we kept it that way, though, and we'll talk about it when you get over to the second one.
Right.
Those are the options, yeah.
Yes.
Option, option B.
So, for 10,000 gallons, for 10,000 gallons, will it cost you 11.86 and 4.96 now?
Per thou, that's per thousand, right? That, that 4.96.
Right, that's, that's your current rate, that's per, per thousand gallon. So, that's not the cost.
You have to multiply that by nine.
No, it's not.
And then, there'll be a one over here that has that.
Right, the, the next slide, page six, 10,000 gallons. Your, your cost of service, if you look just under the, the bolded line, you can see usage level the far-left column, number 10, it's currently costing you 67.70. You're collecting 56.50 on, on a 10,000-gallon customer, which is your average user in the residential inside class is right at 6,000 gallons, which is why I have that six kind of bolded and, and grayed out, uh, so that it would stand out. If it's your average customer, it's costing you just under 47, you're collecting just under 37. So, there's a $10 gap on your average user as it stands right now. Option B is, still incorporates the customer charge increase, but it's trying to get half of the revenue from the customer charge and half from volume. So, splitting that 50/50. So, we're obviously cutting that customer, the recommended customer charge increase from a dollar fifty a year to 75 cents a year. So, at full implementation, that would be a $1.50 increase on the customer charge. And in order to meet the, the, the additional revenue goal, we would go up 11 cents per thousand gallons for all usage over 1,000 gallons, all usage that you currently are collecting revenue on.
Wait a minute, would it start at 1,000 or anything over 1,000?
Over 1,000.
Anything over 1,000, because you have 1,000 included in the minimum bill already.
Right, okay. So, anything over 1,000 is going to be that 11 cents?
Correct.
Okay.
More. Increase.
Additional.
Correct, on all, all usage that you currently collect revenue from. So, that option B would bring in approximately $644,000, again, based off of, off of 2017 usage, which is in line with, with option A.
10,000 less. 10,000 less.
And here we have the, the same, the same rate curve from, from the, the results of the study, the, your current rate. And again, that, that greenish-yellowish line, the middle curve there is representative of that dollar fifty increase at full implementation. Again, this would be, we're talking about, as Eric said, to start a, a two-year plan. This would be full implementation, year one and year two. So, it would be a, a dollar and 50 cent increase on the customer charge and then 22 cents on all volume. And then you can, you know, again, the, the 6,000, your average customer, the bill would go from 36.66 as it stands now for water and water alone to 39.26, which would be a, a $2.60 increase to your average, average user. On page 10, it's really just a snapshot, just a quick summary of, of both options. One, that option A is going to be customer charge, customer charge alone. Option B is a blend of customer charge and, and volumetric rate adjustment. Any questions on water before we jump?
I, I wouldn't know. I, I don't think we've touched customer charge in about three or four years. So, that's why we're coming back to say we, we, to keep this in balance, we need to do something on customer charge. Both option A and B, uh, take two different approaches on that, but do address it for the first time in, in some time. So, that's, that's why we framed it that way. Obviously, if you want to look at it a different way, we can run different options. Uh, but it is staff's recommendation that you do take some action on that fixed piece because we have not addressed it in three going on four years, I believe. So, that's, that's why it's framed this way. But obviously, you have choices and that's a policy choice that you can make and we can run other options if you would like us to. But we do recommend, uh, something to be done on customer charge.
Are you talking about, uh, making, uh, a decision on the customer charge or the options? A or B?
Well, A and B is what we're recommending you consider because they both address, they're two, they're options that address the customer charge. Obviously, you can give us direction to go do something else. But this is what staff is recommending, that these are two good approaches to go forward with that, that do something on customer charge for the first time in some time.
Okay, when.
You did it only on volume last time around.
Only on volume.
Yeah.
But I think it's good to have something on volume because when a customer calls, when a, when one of my constituents calls and says, "I don't use but a spoonful of water every day, why am I getting charged all this?" It's good to have something to say, "Well, that part of this is only being charged to you because of what you use."
Right. But what we're showing you is to get that spoonful.
That's me.
There are fixed costs that take it, to take, to get there. And even with option A, which is all customer charge, you're still not there. You're still a dollar or so away, something like that. It's, it's, it's not quite to where the study shows it should be to fully capture the fixed costs it takes to deliver water to our customer. And, and that, that's a policy choice, but it is, when you look at the true cost structure, that's, that's what that's reflective of. So, that's something you can also share with people.
Alderman Petersen?
I, I want to kind of go back to a reason that we considered not raising the minimum rate. And that is because any customer that only uses 1,000 gallons a month here is probably going to be a single person and very well could be some of the people who can least afford even having to pay extra money, you know? Think about that. And I think that was one of the reasons that we decided to keep the minimum rate low, you know? And then, then add for the people that are using more, then you would expect that they would probably be able to afford more likely than someone who's on a fixed income, who is, you know, maybe only, as I say, only using the 1,000, 1,000 gallons a month. To talk about the fixed cost, you also have only compared the inside residential. And the people who are outside residential and also the, um, the, 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 uh, commercial users pay more. But part of that is that it was felt much of the time that the people who do not live inside the city limits but are still getting water from the city of Franklin should pay more than the people who live in, inside the city limits and pay, even though, as we know, this is, this doesn't have anything to do with taxes, you know? But still, being able to get water from the city is worth something, is definitely worth some, something and some more money because.
And they do, they'll continue to pay more.
That's right, that's right.
And they pay significantly more in terms of.
If you compare that to what some of the other, uh, water, uh, utilities that serve the city of Franklin, I'll bet that they are charging more to the city of Franklin residents than we are charging to the outside, the city, using the city.
Right, and that's largely driven by their, because we work with the bulk of them.
Absolutely.
That's largely driven by their cost to serve those as.
That's right.
And right now, you're, based off your cost to serve those outside the city limit folks, looking at residential, inside the city limit, you're collecting 83 cents on the dollar that you should collect relative to the cost to serve.
Let me know too, that has been an issue that has been raised at the state level. State, state legislation has floated around the last couple of sessions around that very practice. One of the things I asked Jim about specifically is, if you look at what we're doing versus what has raised questions other places in the state, do you think we're in a good place? That what, our rationale is good and, and that we're not overdoing the difference between inside and outside? And I won't speak for you, you, you did give me a, a pretty good feedback on that.
And anything that the, that the utility in the city can do to mitigate that difference will be appreciated at the state level. It's been talked about for years and at some point it will have material traction. It's, it's somewhat akin to taxation without representation. Because they're outside the city limit folks, you're voting on what their rates will be, yet they can't vote on it for you guys.
The flip side of that is that we pledge our citizens bond, we pledge our citizens liability to borrow bond, on bonds, and we can't reach outside the city and make anyone chip in on that.
And there's, there's a value to that, which helps justify some differential.
And I, and I, I think generally, we're in a decent zone there. I don't think we're one of them that's raising a red flag when you look at our rate, the difference in our rate structure there, some, as Alderman Peterson noted, that are significantly higher. They may have a cost justification different than us. Uh, but, but the sense I have is that we're not going too far on that, but that we are, you know, it's, it's a, it's a legitimate policy choice. There are legitimate reasons, both cost and risk exposure, that the city has taken on behalf of folks that are outside of our city, um, that I think, I think you're still in an okay place, but we need to be mindful that it is something that is under scrutiny by other people in the state.
Alderman Barnhill?
Give me an example. I'm just sitting here trying to think. Give me an example of city water outside the city limits.
Mallory Valley.
You mean companies or?
For example, up in Grassland.
That's right.
Okay, Grassland.
So, Grassland is, um, kind of north on Hillsborough up near.
I know, I realize. Okay, so Grassland?
Yeah, so they have, they have City of Franklin water.
Okay.
That we provide, we serve that.
But they're outside of our city limits.
So, they'll charge the 1.2 rate or whatever, whatever the, whatever the ratio, we have something other like that. Okay. So, because sewer, I understand, but water, I mean, we don't even serve all of the City of Franklin residents water.
Absolutely.
And, and I understand the study. What I'd like, what I'd be interested in is, how much 6,000 gallons cost an HB, HB and TS customer? How much does it cost a Millcroft and, how much does it cost a Mallory Valley?
It's funny, you should ask that.
Do you have that? And that's because, and I'm not saying that we, we should be compar, we should be comparing that to that. But we have our own cost and that's the reason for the study. But, uh.
And we'll send this to you in digital form too, but this is something we just.
Well, they're all, they're all regulated monopolies. So.
Well, that, yeah.
I mean, and they're all obliged to break even.
That's right.
So, you'll see, this is, this is where we are. We're kind of, sort of middle of the pack when you look at where we are compared to the other, other water providers. Some are independent utilities, some are other cities in middle Tennessee. Uh, the blue bar is the 1,000 gallons, so kind of that fixed rate customer, a very low volume customer. And then the, uh, 7,000 is more of a typical, uh, you, residential user.
So to the, to the far right of this graph is the two, is the two alternatives that we're proposing. So the existing rates that, that we charge are kind of in the middle, that Eric pointed out. And then to the far right, you can see these ones over here are new rates, or the proposed new rates, I should say, options that you have in front of you tonight.
The Spring Hill rates, two thousand and ten.
And that was the last time they were updated.
Oh, they got, well, that's their problem. That can't be, that can't be the right number now.
I'm afraid it is.
I believe it is.
No, I'm not saying it's not the rate they're actually charging. It's not the right number.
Correct. We conducted a study for the City of Spring Hill, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen.
And they didn't do it.
Obviously, no great action was taken. But I would anticipate something happening.
Yeah, they're going to end up with a big jump.
Right. Which is why we try to do regular manageable increases.
Did you get your?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I had one comment about that.
Sure, sure, because I want, I want to let him go on to the sewer.
And that is that one reason that we serve Grassland is because we get a lot of our water from H V U D, and the line comes through Grassland. So of course, we would be the ones to serve them, as I say. The line that pays what, eighty percent of our?
Sure, yeah, one of the.
That supplies eighty percent of our water.
Is served through Grassland.
Comes, that's right, comes from the Cumberland River through them.
Well, we serve them because it's advantageous to us to serve them.
Well, we serve them because decades ago, somebody drew a line, and they carved it up and, and sorted it out politically, that's the reality.
Okay, well, it's, it's advantageous for us to serve them, as I will continue to say, because we're charging them more than we're charging the inside the city limit rate. So they have, they have no, they have no water. So therefore, the water line is there, the tap fees are there, and that's the reason for that particular service to come through there then, so. Ready to move on to the sewer rates?
Sure, all right. On, on page twelve, and again, this is a meeting that has good news. On, on sewer, per the plan, you know, building up for the anticipated debt service, sewer system recovered at a hundred and thirty-six percent in total. So a dollar and thirty-six cents for every dollar needed. Again, intentionally ramping up to the, to the looming borrowing relative to the new plant. Moving to page thirteen. We're recommending, we're in years past, I think in twenty, twenty fourteen, I was here, recommending six-point-seven-five percent rate increase on average. Two years ago, it was five and a half, this year, three and a half percent, which for a sewer system, period, to be able to do that is, is pretty strong. The, the water, wastewater and trash service, national CPI, on average, the last few years, is somewhere between three and a half and four percent, going back to twenty fourteen. And, and the fact that you guys are in a position to increase your sewer assets by, what, seventy-five to eighty percent when this new treatment plant comes online, and have rate increases that are in line with national averages is, is, is strong. But again, we're looking for the next two years, and so this, this two-year buy, this, the initial two-year period out of the five, three, three and a half percent, and then down to three percent, we hope, in twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. And again, it's going to be the, the, you know, we established that, that option, or that target of three and a half percent for the next two years. And the scenarios are your options are going to be the same that they were on water, but specific to the, to sewer data. So option A on, on sewer is a two-dollar-and-thirty-two cent increase on the customer charge each year. That would bring in roughly one-point-three million dollars. Again, focused on, on the customer charge and the customer charge alone. You can see here on the, going to slide twelve, or excuse me, slide, what, fifteen. Cost you right now, before this, this debt comes onto the system, fifteen dollars a month to have a sewer customer on the system before y'all collect anything from them, and then three dollars and fifty-one cents for all consumption, or all collected from up to fourteen thousand gallons. Or, excuse me, all, all usage there. So again, option A is, is focused on that customer charge, largely driven by the fact, and I, and I understand the, the reservations that you may have, but between now and, and twenty twenty-two, with this debt coming on, with the anticipated interest, interest rate in terms of the issue, bringing on about three-point-six to three-point-seven million dollars of additional debt service each year. And that's money that you'll have to pay back regardless of what the weather is and how much sewer you're collecting. That is, you know, paying, paying the bond down is the definition of a fixed expense. So we're adding about, you guys ultimately will add about three-point-six to three-point-seven million dollars a year in, in annual depreciation expense. Based off the number of sewer bills that were sent out during twenty seventeen, that comes out to an average increase per bill of twelve dollars and eighty-five cents. Just taking that three-point-seven million, three-point-six-seven actually is what we're projecting, dividing it by the two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand bills that were sent out during the period of, you know, our, our review period of twenty seventeen, it's twelve dollars and eighty-five cents per bill. That is not a rate recommendation, that's just math.
A month?
Correct, correct, that's per bill cent. So that, that's one of the main reasons, and is the large driver is to why I really would like y'all to seriously consider going up on the customer charge.
That twelve-dollar amount's not anywhere in this presentation, is it?
It, not directly, no.
Okay.
That was in my scribbles as I was sitting, sitting in the back. It is reflected on page, we'll just move forward?
Sure. Tell me when we get there.
All right, well, it's back to page, it's reflected, and you'll see the jump in the twenty twenty-one debt service on page thirteen. It's included in that, the jump on the far left column, you see the, the rate requirement in twenty twenty of sixteen-point-six. We jumped, or the, or the, the city would jump to nineteen-point-seven, largely driven by, by debt service.
And, and we have, though, we've, we have some worked ahead, right? I mean, I don't want to say saved back, but we have.
Cash that will help you manage this, this anticipates using both impact fees and fund balance that we've designated for the project.
Fund balance, fund balance is what.
Yeah, and that's part of what you've built capacity on. That's, that's why we've done the five-year planning we've had to keep rate adjustments manageable, but build this capacity so that we're not having a massive increase this year or a year from now when all this debt service hits us. So it is a ramp up, we build up some cash that will help us reduce borrowing to a certain level. But this is the structure we've got at this point.
Right, and when, when Mark and Michelle worked on that, on the budget, that was, you know, they, they planned on using a portion of the, the cash on hand. All right, so page sixteen shows, shows where we are today. On the average user, it's seven thousand gallons. We are in, you know, as we've discussed, we're intentionally overcollecting right now to have that slow build, that incremental build towards, towards full recovery when that debt does hit the system. Page seventeen, again, same approach. We're still targeting that, that three and a half percent increase in annual revenue from rates, but we're splitting, you know, trying to get half of it from the volumetric side and half of it from the, the customer charge side. So you see a dollar-and-sixteen cent increase per year, and then fourteen cents for every thousand gallons collected. That's illustrated, option B, and you can see the rate impact there on, on page nineteen. Page twenty, again, is a summary of, of what we, really, those two options. Just trying, one is focused solely on the customer charge. Option B for, for both water and sewer is trying to get half of it from the customer charge and half of it from volume.
Have you figured in additional, the growth, new, new customers, or is that calculated?
We have, we've taken a conservative approach to that. That's part of the reason, customer growth along with expense control was part of the reason that, that we're no longer having to shoot for six, six-point-seven-five percent.
Okay, so they brought down their percentage.
Correct, and that's consistent with our approach. Correct.
We've had more customer growth in sewer than in water.
Yes.
But we have had some in both, but more zero.
And the number you used last year was two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand?
Yes, you sent out two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-six bills in fiscal year twenty seventeen. That's residential in and out, commercial in and out.
Yeah, so we could easily add another thousand.
Yes. And which is why we're, there isn't going to be enough customer growth over a two-year period to dramatically alter this. That's, that's, given the, the consistent and compared to most of the country aggressive growth, it's, I think it's very prudent to take these planned long-term, but take short-term action.
Yes.
And, and we do, so, we do serve most of the people in the city with sewer.
Yeah, it's much more aligned with your city limits and somewhat out of your, outside of your city limits.
And somewhat outside, yes. Versus our water.
Yeah, absolutely, it's different, definitely a different animal in that way.
So I, so we had passed out earlier, as we started talking about the rate sheet for this, the rate comparison. So as you can see, kind of in the middle of the page, once again, is our existing rates. And then on the far right side is the two proposed rates for the customer charge and the, the hybrid, which is both the customer and the volumetric charge.
Again, we're, we're pretty much in the middle of the pack on this one as well, which is good considering the, the increases we've had to make over the last several years. And as Jim mentioned, we are at or really below inflation now, projected out in our five-year plan in both water and sewer, in terms of the inflation rate that is tracking in utility, in the utility world. So that's a, that's a significant step forward from where we've been, and we're glad that we're at that point. But that's a result of good planning and decisions that you all have made over the last, really, nine years to get us here. So we appreciate that.
Alderman Petersen.
I think it's really hard to wrap my head around it, because just from a rate payer situation, and part of my adult life, getting City of Franklin water, the last eighteen years, getting it from another provider, raising five children, and now going from a household of seven to a household of four. And to be quite honest, my water bill's higher now than it's ever been in my entire life. So incremental changes on paper of two dollars here and a dollar fifty here, and sounds palatable, but in reality, the translation seems so much different when I go to write that check and put it in that mailbox out there. So for, so it's hard to wrap your head around, I'm still getting the same service, I'm probably using less water. I know that stormwater's come on board in, in my lifetime, so that's an added line item on that bill. But, and, and I don't know what my aunt pays in, in Oak Hill or what people pay in Spring Hill. So to see this in the translation to what I pay, it's hard for me to wrap my head around us being in the middle of this graph. You know what I'm saying? And exponentially, we've grown in the amount of citizens. I understand that our service coverage has been amped up, but yet, it doesn't seem like it's been spread, because if I'm going to a hundred dollars a month for four people, to me, that's a lot, and now it's probably going to be whatever this is. It's, it's hard to wrap my head around it, to even explain to somebody who had called me, so.
Well, the thing to always remember on any utilities is they're self-supporting.
I understand that.
Independent businesses. This is what it costs to run it, and we have to choose how we're going to spread that cost among our system users. And so that's what we've tried to consistently show you. This is what it takes to, to pay for the system and the service that everybody receives.
And the employees and the repairs.
Everything that's involved, to maintain it and to treat it and to do everything. And the debt, especially in sewer, you're going to, you have a debt service hit that's coming, because you're making a hundred-and-thirty-three million dollar investment in your, in your treatment capacity, which is, you know, huge investment, but something we've got to do to maintain the level of service and, and to meet future needs as well.
But I think for me, to, and, and again, these graphs are great. I would love to do a comparison of real actual users. I'll give you my water bills and try to get something from another provider with those same, just so you can see where. Because to me, this graph's pretty and it's great, but I don't know how we really compare apples to apples.
The red bar, seven thousand gallons is a typical user.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's what that attempts to do. That, that, you know, some people use more, some people use less, but that's our estimate of what an average residential customer uses. So that, that's what we're trying to show you with that bar is, if that same amount of volume typical user in, you know, the City of Murfreesboro is a little bit less. In Goodlettsville, it's a lot more. It just, you know, it just shows you that, and, and those are each their own utilities. And I assume they're doing the same exercise we're doing, is covering those costs, and they're not subsidizing it any other way, because they shouldn't be.
And without speaking to any specific utility on this list, you know, at sewer, you guys are overcollecting intentionally right now, so that we're able to level off theoretically, to levelize the bill.
Two years, that won't be the case.
We, we don't know, I have no way of knowing where White House is relative to if they're fully recovering their operating expenses.
I understand.
So it's, it is difficult to know, there's a, I understand, looking at, at the cost of the consumer and, and that alone, but that's a little bit of a vacuum, because we have no idea how that, how that utility is financially. A lot of utilities, and luckily, it's phasing out, y'all are very much in a position to be proactive, right? I mean, you're looking forward and you're planning forward. A lot of utilities that we work with are trying to fill in a hole that's been dug for years and years and years, because in order to keep rates lower, they've delayed investment in plant or proactive maintenance in their facilities. So a lot of these utilities that may have lower rates are playing catch-up relative to T D A C or, or, you know, theoretically EPA as well on regulatory concerns. I mean, the, the amount of money, and I'll pretend to be an engineer briefly, and then I'll be quiet. The amount of money that you're having to spend to meet more and more stringent T D A C or EPA mandated regulations, you don't, you're still buying the same thousand gallons as you did fifteen years ago. And I don't understand how much cleaner it is today than it was fifteen years ago. But I know it, it is substantially, and that, that's not specific to Franklin. That is, that's, that's across the South, East, and theoretically, across the country, yes.
Wait, let's say our, your water bill, though, that we think of as our water bill, it's the water and the sewer, and what else is in there, stormwater?
You typically have your, yeah, sanitation fee too. So it's, it's got a lot of different components for most of our customers, so.
That's right.
But on an average bill now, we can add the increase in sanitation.
Right.
Increase in water, and increase in sewer. So collectively, two, three fifty, we're like seven or eight dollars possibly, each year.
Depending on your volume, but yeah, yeah.
And, and we, if you look at the minimum amounts, you know, for the people who really don't have much use, and again, many times, your people that are single on fixed income would, would enter into the, these, the little blue ones, you know, and everything. And that really makes a differ, I mean, it makes a difference percentage-wise to them a lot more than it makes to the rest of us.
Well, we need to, probably, yeah, go ahead, because we need to move on forward, and this will come back again.
Yeah, I want to make sure we give you something you're comfortable voting on in two weeks, potentially. What I would suggest we give you is a resolution that adopts or identifies the five-year plan. It doesn't lock in your rates, but it says, "This is our five-year plan for water and sewer." And then give you individual ordinances that are two reading ordinances for water and sewer, that would be the first two years. And, and we would propose you choose either option A or option B. If you want something different than option A or option B, we need to do a little more work. If you're comfortable choosing between option A and option B, we can write ordinances that, that you choose one of those at first reading, and then second reading, we will lock in what you chose and, and go forward. And we're double and triple checking all those numbers before they get to you. So that's the other, the other piece. If, if you're comfortable with us presenting the options that we gave you tonight, we can do sort of a fill-in-the-blank version for first reading in two weeks. And then the, the five-year rate is really just that overview of the revenue target. So it doesn't lock in approach on fixed rate versus volume. It just gives that target that we're working towards, and what now is more of an inflationary rate increase.
Okay. We're going to move forward to item five. Graph Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixty-five to A four oh one A, Define Contribution Retirement Plan in the Form of the ICMA Retirement Corporation Deferred Compensation Plan and Trust and four fifty-seven D Plan in the Form of ICMA Retirement Corporation Government Profit Sharing Plan and Trust and Engage ICMA Retirement Corporation for Third-Party Administration of Each Plan. Thanks for such a short introduction.
So one of the, just as a quick introduction, I'll let Christine go from there with a little more detail, and I think she has a presentation for you. But as you know, effective January one of seventeen, we moved to a Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System-based pension program for our city team members. So everyone hired on or after that date are in that program. One of the things we talked about when we adopted that was that we anticipated providing what we called sort of a sweetener on top of it, which was a four oh one to make us a little more competitive than your average T C R S pension program. That would be an optional and a match up to a certain percentage. We talked about whether it'd be two or three percent. The City of Brentwood had a similar program at that time. The City of Brentwood had a similar program at that time. And so we had sort of just put that out there when we adopted the plan. But we didn't plan to put it in place until people had been in the program for two years. So we're getting to that point where we need to make a decision if you want to provide that additional capacity or that additional sweetener in terms of retirement. And again, it's optional. People can choose whether to do it or not. If they want to do two percent, they can do two percent, they can do one percent, they can, you know, they can, they can choose to do it at a level, and you would just match whatever their choice would be. So Christine's going to walk through that with you and give you a little more detail, and then we just would ask for your guidance. I would tell you, this is written as if there's a resolution. There's not a resolution in your packet. I apologize for that. But really, the point tonight is to walk through the structure with you and get your guidance, and then we can come back with a resolution. And I believe we had a little technical glitch earlier and that this presentation didn't get on as, as quickly as some of the other materials do. But I, I think it's a pretty straightforward discussion. So I'll let Christine take you through that, and any feedback you can give us would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Eric. And, and really, Eric did a great job of explaining the existing pension plans that our active employees are currently, full-time active employees are currently participating within. To give you just a snapshot of what our employee counts and the programs look like, of course, this can change by the day, but as of a couple of weeks ago, I'm here in August of two thousand and eighteen, we had five hundred and two full-time employees that were participating in that closed City of Franklin Defined Benefit Plan. Most of our employees, since currently, we were open through December of two thousand and sixteen for hires, that, that those are most of our folks. We have another one hundred and one employees who are members of a defined contribution plan. This was a plan that was opened from two thousand and one, two thousand and ten to two thousand and sixteen. Those hundred employees who chose that plan were hired during that, that time period of two thousand and ten to two thousand and sixteen. And it is a employer match to an employee contribution into a defined contribution plan. That is, that is not a defined benefit the way the closed defined benefit plan or TCRS is structured. It may have been employees who came here maybe later in their careers that chose to participate in that plan. It would be one example. And then since January first of two thousand and seventeen, we've hired ninety-nine employees who are members of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. So we've had a, with, our HR department's hired a lot of folks in about eighteen months. And so what, what this proposal regards is related to what is currently ninety-nine employees that are participants in TCRS, the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. We, we wanted to do just a comparison. This is a type of information that I know back in two thousand and sixteen, you were presented when the decision came before you to, to close the existing City of Franklin Pension Plan. But wanted to just give a, an overview of a comparison between the, the two defined benefit plans that our active employees are participating in. The, there, there are some differences in, in pretty high-level areas, but to walk through the, the full retirement age on the closed plan versus the TCRS plan, H sixty-five, H sixty-five for the, the closed plan, H sixty for TCRS. However, the service years for full retirement is thirty years for TCRS versus twenty-five years for that closed City of Franklin plan. And of course, all of these are planned, they're, they're plan-specific in which calculations go into how much the liabilities for the specific plans, you know, do cost us. So these are the, these are the assumptions that are different between the two plans. The multiplier at full retirement, which in essence calculates the benefits that the retiree receives at full retirement for that closed City of Franklin plan was two percent. For TCRS, it's a little bit more complicated of formula, attempted to summarize it, but it's, it's a one and a half compared to two percent. And the TCRS plan gives a five percent one-time benefit increase upon retirement. So if you put the math together and just want to compare the two plans, that multiplier for full retirement is two percent versus one point five seven five for the, the TCRS plan. Both plans have a five percent employee contribution as well to the plan. For this closed plan, those were city employees hired beginning in two thousand and ten, had the five percent employee contribution. For TCRS, all of the TCRS employees have the five percent contribution. And as we walk down through, you know, these, these plan specifics, what does that really, what kind of a difference is that in the benefits for an employee? And I just picked a, an employee who retires with an average final compensation of fifty thousand dollars. That's the average of the last five years of that employee's service. And in this, in this example employee, in the, the closed City of Franklin plan, that would be a thirty thousand dollar a year benefit versus in the TCRS plan, twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So just that, just to give you a sample retiree, that, that's kind of how you'd walk through the math and the differences between the, the benefits in, in both plans. Of course, they are both, we, we believe they are both very stable retirement plans or both well-managed retirement plans. And of course, beginning in January of two thousand and nineteen, TCRS is going to be providing more administrative payroll services for our closed City of Franklin plan. So we, we, we believe both are very strong, stable retirement plans, but there are differences in the benefits between, between the two at full retirement.
Thirty, thirty years times two percent.
Yes, sir.
In the closed.
In the closed plan. Wanted to walk through, and these were, once again, I'm sure, discussion points back from a couple of years ago, but we've gone through these again as staff, as we've been working through what the proposal would, would look like, that the purposes of a voluntary defined contribution employer match for the TCRS employees. And I believe, first of all, it's a recognition that the employees participating in the closed City of Franklin plan as they work beside these TCRS employees, that they do have a, the TCRS employees do not have the same guaranteed benefits in, in retirement as the ones from the closed plan. And recognizing that fact, an employer match plan would serve perhaps to encourage employees to begin setting aside their own money earlier in their working careers to, to save for retirement. Certainly, we, we do have the, the voluntary four fifty-seven plans, and some of our employees do participate in that. However, this plan, which is modeled after something similar to what Brentwood has had for, for some time, doesn't encourage employees in the, the second year of service, beginning the employer match is similar to what Brentwood has had for some time, would, would incentivize employees to, to begin saving earlier in their, in their careers in a defined contribution plan. And then finally, because we, we would actually, when we, when we budget, when we plan for costs on a defined benefit pension plan, there's actuarial assumptions, everything from how long people are going to live to certainly what investments are going to bring in on those assets. There's, there's a level of uncertainty in the future. And if our, if as employer, we intend to contribute to a defined contribution plan, it's, it is easier to project the cost. We, we look at what the payroll is. Certainly, once a contribution is made to an employee's account, then the employee from then on manages those funds and, and is responsible for managing that to where they can, you know, hopefully have additional funds available within their retirement. But the employer doesn't have any more responsibility on the, on a defined contribution once that defined contribution is put into the employee's retirement account. And there's also, and the last point, when you talk to other folks who work at the governments who have an employer match plan, while certainly the employer would like people to contribute at the highest amount, when it's voluntary, some employee, employees choose not to participate, or they don't participate at the highest level. And certainly, the, the history would be probably that we wouldn't have full participation, even though we would encourage our employees to participate. But while a match would be anticipated, the actual expense would probably be something less than what the, the full, full amount could be.
Just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
It says that the employee contribution now is five percent to TCRS. How much does the city contribute?
For, for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, we're, we put in two, six point one nine percent.
Into TCRS.
Into TCRS.
Thank you.
And every year, TCRS performs a study and tells us our new rate, and that's our rate beginning July first.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
So what we put here, just, just beside one another, and we, we'll give just a little bit of background. As we've said, the City of Brentwood has had a defined contribution employer match for, for some years. And theirs has been a three, up to three percent of employees. Once they reach their two-year anniversary, the employee can contribute three percent, or they can participate at two percent, one percent, or, or choose not to participate at all. And that has been their plan for some time. They, their staff has advised that they are considering moving, reducing this down to two percent. That would be for new hires, they've been advising us for new hires beginning January of nineteen. And they are looking at doing some changes to their, their retirement plans and reducing the two percent as part of, they would reduce it for new employees, not for ones who are currently there. And so.
So that would do thirty, five percent.
That's right.
Yes. And so what, what we have proposed is something similar to what Brentwood is proposing to their board, which they, they anticipate considering in September, September tenth meeting, which would be the, the two percent, up to a two percent voluntary contribution by the employer based on the employee contributing. And that would begin at the second anniversary of hire, which for, for us, our first employees hired on TCRS will reach two years, January of nineteen, the second half of this current fiscal year.
So this is what we're bringing to you now, because we'd made an assumption that we would explore this option, but we need your guidance if you want to go ahead and follow through on that part, kind of this last part of the transition of the retirement program. And from my perspective, there's two reasons to do it. One is the competitive position in the market as we look to hire new people and bring them in, and that we are highly competitive against other TCRS providers. But then there's also the internal equity question. You know, Christine showed you that slide where there's a difference between people in the closed plan and people in the new plan. That's as much as we can do through TCRS. That's just the way it is. This does give a little ability to close that gap a little bit by providing that additional match on the four oh one side that, that newer employees can have that the folks in the closed program don't have, but they have other benefits, obviously, because they have a more favorable structure in the base pension plan. So it helps us internally with some equity, and it also helps us with our competitive position, we think, compared to other cities and other entities that might be hiring and putting people in the retirement system. So that's the bottom line.
Everybody good?
Yep.
At two percent.
Yeah.
Two percent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job. Item six is approval to enter the professional services agreement with the Architect Workshop for the City of Franklin City Hall Programming Report Regarding the Development of a New City Hall.
So this is the item we talked about two weeks ago. Brad went back and looked at this with the, the identified consulting team and asked them to remove the existing structure elements. There was a, seemed to be a consensus among the board that we know this building doesn't have that kind of longevity in it. To, to, to do further analysis on that is probably not where you wanted to spend some money. So we have taken that out. There is a significant programming element still in this, so that reduction brought us down, I believe, under a hundred and forty thousand for the total price tag, but wanted to bring that back to you and, and get any other feedback you have. But this would give us guidance on what a new city hall would look like, might function, how it might function, and also help us anticipate how we might use both the area on this block for city hall and understand what else might be available for other redevelopment as well that could help offset the cost of city hall.
So Eric's, Eric's pretty much explained it very well as usual. But what this, what this does is this gets us at the point of we, we would be meeting with department heads, administration, you folks. There would be some game players out there within the city that we may want to meet with as well to kind of talk about our existing city hall. And what are we looking for in the next twenty years to fifty years for a new city hall? This will be, it's a pretty, the documentation that I looked at with Mr. Kenon was quite a bit involved in regards to what our needs are now, what do we see our needs in the future, comparison where we are, what do we need, what are we looking for, square footage of rooms, meeting rooms, court clerk? Just an analysis of how we see ourself. This basically will get us to a point that we're at, able to go start looking for an architect and start looking at some, maybe some design drawings only. Nothing construction-wise, just design drawings. We need to identify the group that we've been meeting with, myself, Eric Vernon, and some others. We need to get together and decide, you know, what, what outside folks we'd like to bring in as well, as I stated, just to chat with and to discuss it. But it's a, it's a pretty heavy internal document, and that, all that information will be compiled. It'll be brought to you. It'll also be brought under an economic type of analysis to tell you in regards to where we are construction-wise on a facility. How else can we, what else can we do with this, with this site, as, as a few of you mentioned the last time I was here? So that is, that's, that is basically it. It'll be very informative, been a lot of, lot of meetings going on in regards to it with different departments.
Okay, Alden and Barham.
Not sure that I, not sure that I under, well, maybe I understand, but I'm not sure how you're going forward with architectural design or drawings or whatever. You can understand the square footage you may need, but unless you are looking at what the rest of the property's going to do, whether or not somebody's going to come in and develop three and a half acres, or three, or two and a half, or whatever, I don't, I, I don't see, I don't see this study unless there's a broader outside entity or whatever coming in and saying, I'm wanting to do this, and I'll do this in order to be able to do. And it's quite similar to what we had in two thousand and eight that did not necessarily go through. But maybe would have went further if it hadn't been for the economic slowdown that we had. But, you know, whether or not, whether or not this building here is two stories, three stories, what the, what the footprint is, or whatever it is on that. And, and I know that the last time I was here, I could, I could feel, I mean, I thought I was going to pump some oxygen in here when I mentioned that, that.
I'm sorry, Cloud.
We need to, we need to also be open-minded enough to look to say, you know, this might not be the best location. And because this is extremely valuable property. And, you know, and if there's, there's nothing historic about this city hall and this building and this location. I mean, it's been here since the eighties, but it was down at Spitz and Harbison before that, and it was someplace else before that. So, so I think we need to, I think when we look at this, because I, I believe that, that, I believe if you look at it and there's input, I think that there'll be some input that says, look at a different location and what it would do for parking, but it would also free up the building that you would stay here until you got ready to go into the, do a new building someplace else then. And I know that when they all said, said this is a terrible idea and we can't move it to Cool Springs. I'm not saying they might move it to Cool Springs. I said, stay within Franklin, and that's within the five or six-block area here, six or seven, whatever it is. But I, but we need to, we need to, you know, at least consider that, so.
I, I hear what you're saying, and I think those conversations will be forthcoming. What mainly this is, though, is this is mainly getting a plan together, a programming plan together with departments, with this, with this space to create a new city hall. We're not looking to go into a design drawing type aspect. All we're looking to do is be able to get the components put together to be able to present those to you. And, but we'll also be bringing you some schematic thoughts and ideas on basically what they call blocking. It won't be really a design that'll show you what something else will show, like what a, what a structure could look like. It'll be basically a blocking atmosphere of regards to what is needed in regards to departments. It's gathering space. It is, it is gathering of information that can go forward down the road. This is just kind of that first step before you get to that architectural aspect of it.
Pretty expensive first step.
It is, it is expensive. It, it is quite a bit. I've been involved with some other projects around Franklin that have hit a higher threshold in dollars, one being my church, which I was surprised at the time, but we got a lot of people in the church.
Yeah. That's true.
Yes, sir.
All right, Alden and Berger.
It's just, I understand that no matter if it stays in this space right here on this block or whether it's on Columbia Avenue or it's somewhere else, you're just doing a needs analysis of city hall and of your departments, of, of. a needs analysis of city hall, and of your departments, of our departments, so, yeah, it is pricey, but needs analysis are not inexpensive.
Definitely not really what I'll consider a needs assessment, but a needs analysis.
Yes.
So it's a good, good way to put that.
Yeah, it's exactly what you have to do with companies, to kind of grow, or move, or anything, you have to do a needs analysis, not, and I very well understand that those are very expensive, so.
And, and with this, too, will be with the economist that's involved, helps us with our numbers, to look at, what would it cost to develop it? How else could we develop this property? What is the value of our property?
Yes.
Those ideas, and those answers will also be discussed as well.
Right, because one of the things I think is very important, is we have a law, we have a whole block, and part of this block can be developed, two and three stories, or whatever it is, that we can do, and the other half of this block could be, as Clyde says, very expensive property, so we would have that luxury almost, to say, well, we wouldn't lose the entire block, we would have the best of both worlds, or we could, we could. So, I want to see that, yeah.
Just, just one comment, where it says, "We would meet with a limited group of local stakeholders," that scares me just a little bit, with some other situations where some people were picked, you know, just to meet, I'm just saying.
That, that is a situation that more will become involved, when you start looking at how something looks as a charrette during that architectural design aspect.
Good point. Thank you.
All right, we need to move on, get out of here. Item seven is a contract with Loson Associates for the Franklin Special School District Baldfield Renovation Master Plan. Everybody good with that? We'll move on to-
Thirty thousand dollars.
Good, good.
Good job, Lisa.
She crushed that.
She's awesome, and she, and then-
We said "had" earlier.
Discussion irrigation metering structure.
Hey, you're back.
I am back. So, this is, we have, Vicki's pulling up this, and, so this is an agenda item that we brought to you back in June. We, we kind of deferred it and gave you, tried to give you guys some time to think about this, and wanted to bring it back again, and looking for some direction. So I can briefly go through the presentation once again, if you, if you, if you want to review those, review those options again.
Is there a clear, kind of summary of the options?
Yeah, we can just do that. Yeah, we can go, Vicki, that slide is number, it's page five. Oh, I have the thing.
Oh, I, here it is.
Oops.
Irrigation fees alternatives, is that it?
There it is. Yeah. Well- So, the, the two alternatives that, kind of are the major alternatives, is one of them is a winter pricing model. So, so right now, we have the irrigation meter that customers can purchase, that will solely meter irrigation water, so there's no sewer charge attached to that. So using a winter pricing model would take their average water consumption in the winter, which when you're not irrigating, and it would take that, take that water usage, and we would use it all year. So we would, we would not be using that volumetric charge that we typically are, that we're using right now. The next, so that's, that's one option.
The downside on that is you don't capture if there's a change in usage during, general usage during the summer months.
You would not capture that.
Which there can be in some households.
That's not just, that's not just irrigation.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, both of these options, and we can talk about that, so, for the winter pricing model right now, the way that we have our rates designed currently, is for, for potable water demand, we have an inclining rate structure, so the more water you use, the more you get charged. For sewer, we have a declining rate structure, which identifies that water usage for irrigation, so the more water you use in sewer, the less your sewer bill is, because you're probably using that water for irrigation. Does that make sense? So if we, if we were to go to the winter pricing model, we would obviously need to reevaluate those rates, because we would-
That structure, that rate structure.
That structure would be a little bit different now. So the, the next option that we have is just a simple reduction in the irrigation metering impact fee that we have. So right now, so, obviously, this improves the return of investment for customers. The, the actual typical cost of installation is about $1,600 for a three-quarters inch residential meter, which is what we typically install. The, the cost of installation is about $800, and our, the municipal code allows us to recover that cost, so that would be a reduction in that cost. The, kind of skipping down through all of those fees, because I know it's a lot of numbers, but the, the one thing, this would also be a revision in the, the rate structure that we would be looking at as well, because if we were to reduce the cost, the meter cost, we would indirectly be increasing the use of potable water for irrigation, which would then increase that demand. So, either alternative would reevaluate us, would be recommending us to look at revising the rate structure.
Or you can stick with the structure you have today, which has a higher level of entry to buy the irrigation meter, and, and it essentially has a premium associated with irrigation, in terms of a cost of entry to the, to irrigation.
So we have, we have three emails that we've received from customers, who have requested us to look at this item, that's why it remains on the agenda. We can certainly forward those emails to you.
Please do.
Okay. But we-
Do they have a preference, or do they know?
Well, they had a preference.
It's, it's a fairness argument about, you know, you're, I'm paying for water that, that is, that isn't being treated at a sewer plant-
Right.
Like it is being treated at a sewer plant.
Yeah.
Which, when you don't have an irrigation meter, is absolutely true. If you have an irrigation meter, then we absolut, we know, exact, we have some precision what's going into irrigation, and then you're not paying the sewer fee for it, and then you're paying the sewer fee for what is going into the treatment system.
Yeah, I've had, I've had two irrigation meters in other homes, but they were affordable. This is not affordable, I mean, this is-
Yeah, the payoff is a long way.
Unless you're going to be in your house 20 some years, and you're, and you've got a large lawn, and you're really, you know, watering, I have a small lawn now, but before, you know, I had a much larger one, and I had installed an irrigation meter, and it was relatively inexpensive to do so. And it made all the sense in the world to do it. Even if I was in that house five years, it made sense to do it. To me, it doesn't, you know, help me personally. And then, I talked to some constituents, and said the same thing. You know, we have, we have a lot of building now that's going on with smaller lots. They don't have a lot to water, but they do have some. And, but they want to do that, but it doesn't pay them to put a meter in. A lot of these places doesn't pay to put a meter in these days. You know, if we were building homes on quarter of acres, and, and large lots, you know, big backyards, front yards, that would be, but you don't see that much happening. So, I think going with the meter is just not going to happen for most people, and I think we have to do something.
Well, they're viable.
The meters?
Yeah.
Yeah, they are, they're just the cost, there's an impact fee essentially associated with it.
Extremely.
I would suggest, if you want to change your policy, I would look at the change in the meter price, I think that's better, I'd rather encourage people, and for us to know exactly what's going into the system and what's not, as opposed to the winter averaging, which is sort of a, you know, it's, it's not a bad way to do it, but it's not, it's not precise, that's for sure. I mean, it is, it is taking one segment of the year and applying it to the whole year. And, and many cases, that may be fairly accurate, others, it may be less accurate. So, you know, I, I think it's better to, to maybe make that payback on the meter investment more reasonable for folks, and, and if you want to look at that, I think that would be the direction I would suggest, but if you want us to-
How do you do that at $4,000? I mean, I mean, honestly, I paid 350 bucks for my meter, and I paid a $100 fee. And I, boom, I'm done with it, I've got my meter, and, but in this community, I'd be paying $4,000. And as I said, most of these new developments, and what we have, are small lots. It doesn't pay people to put in these meters. It, it really does not, and I don't know if we could slash that enough to even make it worth people's while.
If you slashed it-
You've got small lots.
If you, if you slashed the price of the meter, what would that do to the rates that we have to collect?
That's a good question. I don't think we know, because it'll depend on how many people do it, and how much volume comes off of that build, Level 1 Sewer, compared to what we're getting today. There's really no way to fully know, it would have some impact, though.
It would have some impact.
Yeah.
So is the number of users growing?
Why would you get a meter?
We actually have fewer, I think we have fewer people irrigating than we did 10 years ago.
So we've consistently provided a message of conservation, you know, of planting, you know, planting really drought-resistant plants, and, and really making an effect for, the water industry as a whole is promoting conservation, so this would, this would kind of take an opposite message of that, which, if that's the direction we want to go, then that's, that's completely fine as well. There are some unintended consequences if we, you know, if you make water more, more available, are there going to be downstream infrastructure that we need to upgrade? So if you're making irrigation a little bit more available to people, and they start, you know, planting really water-sensitive plants, do we need to look at upsizing some mains, and some busy roads, and some of those, those types of things that we'll have to look at as well?
Hand or a box.
When we go out, when we go into a different utility, I mean, Millcroft and Mallory Valley, whatever, do they offer the same meter? I mean, do they offer the same option?
I think there is an irrigation meter, I don't, I don't know if those-
There's differing structures, yeah.
Yeah.
So if, if the person, say, in the Millcroft or Mallory Valley District, or HB, or HBNTS, one of the two, they're actually sending their customer a water bill, an irrigation bill, then they're sending a, we're sending them a bill for sewer. So they're getting three, they would get three, such as that.
Interesting.
Okay.
Well, potentially sewer, stormwater, and trash.
Well, okay, yeah.
Yeah, all those together, yeah.
It would, it would change the volume that they, the sewer, sewer charge is applied to.
I see people going to sleep on this issue.
I have a question. How many irrigation meters do we have out there?
I don't have that number, I had it the last time and did not grab that information.
Do dozens, hundreds, thousands?
Thousand.
We'll have to get you that number, right? In terms of number of meters that are out, irrigation meters?
Yeah.
So the customer bases-
But we'll get, need to get you that number.
The customer base is obviously not as significant as, as the residential meters that we have.
Yeah.
Nope.
It's not a huge number, but-
We have around 20,000, I believe, meters?
So-
Customers.
Customers, I'm sorry.
Each has a meter.
Right. Residential. Okay. I just, I mean, we ought to be able to make some kind of educated forecast about, if the cost of the meters today is X, and we've only had Y meters, if we cut the cost of the meters by a half, or two-thirds, or whatever, what's the foreseeable increase in, because I don't care what they cost, I'm not buying one.
Yeah, I don't see all that much irrigation going on these days.
You give them away, I'm probably still not going to do it.
Must pay more.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, I get it, we don't want to, we don't want to drive up consumption.
Right.
But, I, I just don't know that it's, we could bring them down a little bit, and see if we get any bites, and then bring it down a little bit more, and see if we get any bites. I do think it's a little bit unfair to, to, to charge what we charge, cause the amort, you know, cause the payoff to be, I mean, years, right? I mean, how many, do we know how long it takes to break even if you buy one?
Oh, yeah.
At this, at this rate, it's-
Forever.
It's, it's a while, I mean, but it would be based on how much you water, so-
Yeah, but it's a lot.
Well, okay, let's just, let's just say that if you buy an irrigation meter, you're pretty serious about irrigating, right? And so you would, you would use, you know, irrigation levels. We should know what that is, we should, that's, that should be a knowable number, right?
Well, I think we need to bring back a little more information, maybe some examples of-
Let's give you a proposed rate structure, maybe, and some basic assumptions, we can get you the number on how many there are now.
And what payoff would be for, say, this says that it costs $1,615 to install an irrigation meter, is that correct? So, some, for an average, you, user, you ought to be able to-
What do we sell them for?
Well, if the impact fee's like $4,000.
So, at $4,000, if I watered my yard aggressively, it's going to take a long time to break even compared to just paying tap water price, right?
Right.
Okay. So what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I do think it's a little unfair to, to have it set up that way. But, it, the alternative is, are we really going to generate significant additional consumption if we lower the, the entry cost? I, I don't know a lot of people that are willing to write a $1,000 check to water their yard more, that much cost.
Right.
So even if we cut it by 75%, I just think, I mean, some of this is, I, I get it, there's a reason to be apprehensive, but how many people are willing to drop $1,000 just to water their yard more?
Sure.
All right. Let's run a couple scenarios for you, so you can see what that might look like.
All right, we've got nine, 10, and 11, and 12, which are, have to do with the new international building code.
Just when I thought this couldn't get more exciting.
I didn't say that.
So this is part two, you had part one last meeting, these are ones that we have had a tradition of adding some additional, quote, quote, optional codes, but ones that have been in place for many years, for certain specific purposes, so. Chris and Alan are here to take you through that.
Okay, so, tonight, what we're bringing to you are codes that the state does not require, there are four of them. So, the Board of Mayor and Alderman can choose how to amend them, at what level to adopt them, or whether to adopt them at all. So, what these codes are, we have the swimming pool code, which is a compilation of all the swimming pool stuff that previously just been in other volumes, so they gathered it up, and printed a branded book, that has just swimming pool stuff. Property maintenance code, basic health-
Swimming, yeah, check.
Check, check, check.
You'll note it's blue.
Okay. Basic health and sanitation, really basic, high grass, junk cars, falling down structures.
Check.
Black check.
Existing building code. This tells you how far you go, based on which, what kind of work you want to do. So if you install a toilet, you don't have to install the, rip out the whole plumbing system just to hook up a toilet, you just do the toilet, and it kind of guides you through that. So if you just do a room, where do you start, and where do you stop, instead of leaving it to a code official's interpretation to say, "Well, we got to rip out everything." So it just, so it, it keeps it, you know, it, it just keeps a, something that everybody can rely on and count on. And we have the life safety code, this is implemented by the fire department. This is some specialized life safety requirements that, you know, Andy wants to talk about those, that, that deal primarily with the key elements of protecting people's lives.
We're not avoiding those.
And he could talk a long time on that. But, these, these are the four codes that are optional, and if you have any questions about that, or what you might want to do.
How do you feel about it? What are your recommendations?
You've had these in place for many years, first of all. This is not new, these are, shows you, yeah, these optional ones have been in place for many years.
It's been a long time, too.
Yes. So, so my recommendation is to adopt the most current publication, because they, they play well with each other, they're, they're, you know, they're organized to work together, and-
Good recommendation.
That's my recommendation.
All right, well, that recommendation-
They really add clarity about how to address the numbers.
I just want to know, in, in all those books, if there are, are they tightening up and restricting more, and more, and more, on some of these, that might not be pliable, or, not pliable, might not be applicable to us, or that would be over-restrictive to us, that we might not say, "Well, you know, is that necessary?"
Sure. I can, I can speak to the swimming pool code, it's got, like, for example, in residential, there's an area that speaks to how deep a pool should be, if you want to have a diving board, that area wasn't covered before, so there are more regulations about swimming pools. But for our community, where the, it's very common for $100,000 swimming pool, it makes sense to get into that level of detail. People are making a tremendous investment swimming pools.
All right. And so, and so, your other one?
So the property maintenance code, it's, it was thin before, it's still thin, and it focuses on the basics, so I wouldn't say that it does a tremendous amount more.
All right, here's another one.
The, the existing building code, that code, it does change quite a bit in how it approaches it. I would not say overall that it's more stringent. I can't, and if the fire marshal would like-
Is that the one you were talking about, when if you put in a toilet, that you don't have to rip out everything?
Correct.
That, so that, to me, that sounds more simplified.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Yeah. These actually help provide more specific guidance in areas around the types of projects we see that if you just have the base building codes, it's a little more difficult to get the answers you need to help you do either life safety or a pool or existing building adjustments.
I, I don't want to raise this up, but I honestly think that, you know, these, these are, you know, and you do your job and you do it well and I think that you give us good advice, but I want to make sure that, you know, sometimes we go, "Really? Are you kidding me? We have to do that? We have to, you know, go through, how many hoops do these people have to jump through?" And sometimes then we go, "This is insanity." And then we go back and say, "Oh, it's the codes. It's the codes that we adopted." And so, my, my worry sometimes and, and it's not, you know, through all of it, it's just sometimes when you zero in on some of these things, I get a little like, "Okay, how do we, how do we work with some of that? But, if we adopt it across the board, we're in."
It's my view, this helps you out of those situations because it provides more specific direction in these types of situations that you otherwise don't have with the base building codes at work.
All right.
Sure. Well, well, what I'll offer is that organizations such as the Home Builders Association, the National Home Builders Association, when these codes were being developed through a consensus process at the national conventions and, you know, the various entities that, you know, come together to, to adopt them, the home builders highlighted, you know, they, they were very interested in figuring out what changed and what would really impact their industry and they made a list of those.